To the February 21st, 2012 Prince George's County Board of Education Fiscal Year 2013 Proposed Budget Work Session. Before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with taping of the meeting. Ms. Jackson, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood?
Present.
Ms. Beck? Present. Ms. Foster?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Ms. Eubanks?
Present.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Higgins?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Here. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, this represents the last budget work session prior to our final discussion, which will occur this Thursday at our board meeting. So I'm going to actually turn it right over to Dr. Height and Mr. Stansky and Dr. Coleman Potter for a presentation this evening so that we can move forward, and we do have a public hearing at 7:00. Dr. Height?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. This evening, we're going to do a brief presentation. That presentation is going to be in the four departments that you see on the screen: Human Resources, Performance Management, Information Technology, and Executive Administration. But prior to that, I do want to remind all of the members of the board that as we begin to move into a process that is designed to move the budget towards a vote, that we've had a lot of opportunities for input from our communities and from our schools. As a matter of fact, this is the third work session. We've also had four community forums. We've had a forum with the PTA, the County Council of PTAs, and we've had a forum with students as well. And we also had a community forum that was in Spanish. And all of these were really designed to make sure that we provided as many opportunities as possible for the public to give input in the budget process. So tonight, we will be conducting an overview just on these four areas, and we'll be glad to respond to any questions in these areas or any of the other areas where the board has questions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stansky, who will walk us through this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Height, members of the board. What we're going to do is walk through a brief presentation, which will just sort of highlight, sort of give budget highlights for each one of these various divisions. And then, like Dr. Height said, we'll turn it over to a question and answer session. So the first division that we will be talking about is Human Resources. As the board is aware, the district was awarded a $12.5 million grant from the Wallace Foundation. So we're seeing $3.5 million of that budgeted for fiscal year 13. This is to create a principal pipeline and to develop and retain good leaders in our buildings. There is a small reorganization in Human Resources. They are merging one department into the other three departments. That department is Human Resource Operations. This is to let the board know, per board policy, that our grant is expiring. The T-20 incentive fund grant is expiring on June 30th, 2012. We are asking the United States Department of Education for a one-year extension, a no-cost extension, meaning no cost to the district, because we will have leftover grant money available to use for the last payouts and to pay for staff for one more year. And that also, the Gates Foundation Grant on Teacher Evaluation is also expiring in the middle of next fiscal year, December 31st. Onto Performance Management. The major budget initiative for Performance Management this year is a reorganization within the department. They are moving the grants management function from the Strategic Planning Office to the Enterprise Project Management Office. And then, the Strategic Planning and Performance Office will now focus more on systemic departmental and other strategic planning needs of the district, while the Enterprise Project Management Office will continue to do business process improvement and project management. But then, they will also take on the responsibility of grant management and oversight. In the areas of Information Technology, we are doing a $1.3 million lease purchase. That's the payment over five years to refresh computers, laptops, for our elementary classroom teachers. This equipment is some five, six years old, so it is in line for a refresh. And then also, you will see a fairly substantial reduction of nearly $1.5 million, and this is due to reduction in our phone bills. We conducted a performance audit of our phone bills and realized significant savings from overbilling from our various, from the phone companies that we've been using. And so, we got a one-time payment for the overbilling, and then obviously, now the savings from just the bills being lower each month. So we are seeing a significant savings of $1.5 million in our telecommunications budget for next year. Final budget is the Executive Administration. This encompasses the Office of Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, Pupil Accounting, Communications, General Counsel, and the budgets for the Board of Education. And in these areas, we are seeing a nearly $600,000 reduction for these offices in fiscal year 13. So again, more efficient operations happening within Executive Administration to afford us to redirect some money into the classroom. To conclude, we have responded to numerous questions. They have been posted online. There are some follow-up questions that were submitted over the weekend. Staff is still working through those. We will get those to you tomorrow. And so, all the questions and responses have been posted on board docs and online. And we have tentatively, again, scheduled vote for this Thursday, the 23rd. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll be happy to turn it over to you for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stansky. I wanted to take this opportunity to say that I really agree that I think this year, the way we've been able to get responses back and also engage the public in the process has really been, I think, really transparent and helpful for everybody. And so, colleagues, we have received follow-up questions and responses relative to our last meeting, and as Mr. Stansky indicated, we'll get more tomorrow. Seeing no one buzzed in as of yet, I figured that would make that happen. Ms. Beck?
Okay, I have a question about the allocations for the Montessori and French immersion programs. I understand the definition of "small school," but I don't know why Robert Goddard-Montessori is a small school that qualifies for the subsidy, but Robert Goddard-French immersion is not a small school, since they're both in the same building?
So let me look at their enrollments, but one may have higher enrollment than the other, so one would then dictate one is considered a small school and one is not, per the threshold?
That seems kind of off when you consider they're both in the same building. And so, it is the Robert Goddard-French immersion that is the, that is not qualifying, let's see, Robert Goddard-French immersion, and they have 582. Right. So, Robert Goddard-Montessori has 410, which throws it above that 350, except that's a K to 8. Right. It just seems somewhat odd that we populate those programs because of lottery. So those numbers are our call, not Bounder Kids' call. And so, one half of the building will qualify for this subsidy and one half of the building won't. I just wanted to point that out. Okay. And the answer would be, that's right?
That is correct. Yeah. It's correct because it's also based on a number of students.
Right.
Because one is, well, one is under the threshold and one is above. And so, because of the number of students, then that the one school actually is receiving less.
Hmm. In terms of the Hoyer-Montessori program that's now going to Oak Crest...
Ms. Hathaway Beck, before you go to that question, it's also why we are looking at the opportunity to, you said Goddard, though, you didn't say John Hansen.
No, no.
I get it, yeah.
Yeah, those are small schools because they're splitting up. I understood that. So, the Hoyer-Montessori program, we're supposed to be looking at which line item here, because there's a line item for Oak Crest, and then there's a separate line item for Hoyer. So, I think Hoyer should be zero.
Yeah. One should be zero.
Even though we had the vote on that one? Because we're moving them into Oak Crest, so it'll be Oak Crest-Montessori?
So, no, well, so we gave the money to the Montessori school. So if you look at the sheet I sent you, there is no Oak Crest allocation. At least, I can't find one.
Okay.
So, we're still, I don't know, are we calling it still Hoyer? So we're still calling it Judy Hoyer-Montessori program?
At Oak Crest.
At Oak Crest. So, but for the purposes of what we sent you, the Judy Hoyer-Montessori, that's where the budget is.
That's where the budget is.
Yeah.
The budget is under the Hoyer name?
Correct.
No matter where those children end up? Because I expected to see zero in Hoyer, but I didn't.
I know. So, yeah, there's zero in Oak Crest.
Okay. I did want to point out that when I was going through the athletic response in terms of the fees that we are now charging for athletics, there was something new called BOCI? B-O-C-I? I don't know how to pronounce it.
Bachi.
Bachi, like bachi ball? I didn't know what that was. But Bachi is a special athletic program that's for special needs in partnership with the Special Olympics. Do we charge those students the $50 fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll check, Ms. Hathaway Beck, but I don't believe we do. Because, and here's the reason I say that, because we also don't, I know we don't charge the students who are in the aquatics program and who compete in the swimming, but we'll check to make sure.
Okay. I have a round two. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Stansky, this morning, we received a two-page document, page and a half document. Is that on the agenda for tonight?
Yeah, any follow-up responses?
Okay, fine. Could you refer to that document, please? One, clearly, you know, any increase with regard to staffing is probably a very good thing. However, I need an explanation under PGCEA. Item 100 through, oh, there are varied numbers. Okay. Item number 96. That number is now 1990. That is an increase?
Yes.
That is an increase.
Correct. So what that tells you is there are principals who have chosen to purchase additional media specialists.
Okay. Because I, at the last meeting, I asked for a list of schools that had 0.5. I contend that the value of a librarian slash media specialist is invaluable, and that when choosing to do one 0.5, that I think it is more an issue of personnel and understanding the role that that job has in a building. And that is one that I would like for the superintendent to really begin to look at in terms of that kind of decision-making. Who will pick up those skills, the needs of those children in the building, especially in a high school with 0.5? So as I look at 19.90, that is an increase, okay? That is an increase, and it is locked in increments of .5?
Correct.
And it is spread across the county?
So every school in SVB gets a .5 locked. You can't go below the .5.
Correct.
Principal can choose to purchase another .5 to make it...
Out of that 19.90?
Well, no, that's, no, the 19.90 means that there were a handful number of schools, 40, that chose to purchase an additional .5 media specialist.
And so, that number, 1990, represents...
The increase, the increase over the .5.
Over the .5. So we have 19 and some that chose?
Yes. No, we had 40 that chose, because the number is .5.
We have 40 that chose.
Yep.
And they run the gamut from elementary through high school?
Yes, across the board.
What's the total number of high schools that have only .5?
Of the 24 high schools, I think we have 14 that have .5 and 10 that have purchased the other .5.
That intend to or didn't?
Did. 10 chose, 10 high schools chose to purchase the other .5.
Of the 24?
Of the 24.
So we have 14 that are going to be .5 for the coming school year?
Correct.
Again, I would really like to urge the superintendent to lock high schools at 1.0. I think, in this times, with reading, with all of the issues of research, of students being able to have their classes and the academics of those classes filled out with other resources, I do not believe that this is a wise decision.
Ms. Johnson, I just want to correct something real quick. We had 22 total high schools, and I kept saying 24. It's 22 high schools, so 10 purchased, 12 did not.
I would really like to have that choice of .5 only looked at to see whether or not it is a choice that is personnel-driven and the work that the personnel did or does that created the dynamic of where .5 was deemed appropriate in a high school. I am extremely concerned about this. I do believe that families, parents, and students are going to be extremely concerned, and I want to be sure that this school-based decision is one that is good for students and the academics in that building. And right now, I don't have that information.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I heard your question, and I hear your concern. And we believe as well that a media specialist is an important part of the school program. That's why we put at least a .5 in all of the, in all of the school budgets and lock those. I do want to emphasize, though, that this is a student-based budgeting, and it's a process where schools are making the decisions based on their perceived needs at their local school. And it is something that, in particular, last year, some of the high school principals had actually made the suggestion to move the media specialist to a .5. But it speaks to how we make decisions or how we have made decisions in the past, and we try to make a decision that applies to all of the schools, when the schools want some autonomy to make those decisions based on what they feel their needs are. My only caution is, so if we name, if we name a particular position, so let's name media specialist, and we then provide additional FTEs to make all of them whole, I'm not suggesting our principals, but hypothetically, a question could be posed, well, why not math teachers to add the equivalent in math? Or why not add the equivalent as instructional lead teacher to work, or help a principal work on instruction? Or why not add whatever the position is? So, that's my caution. When we do that and apply it across all schools, we're making a determination that we know best, although they're being held accountable for the decisions in their buildings. And that's why, hence, student-based budgeting was provided, was designed to provide the principals with that type of flexibility to make those decisions as relates to the positions in their schools. I know that doesn't answer your question, but I just wanted you to hear the rationale behind making it a .5 and putting that .5 at all of the schools and then allowing the principals the flexibility of determining what their needs are, also understanding that the principals must still have a way to deliver that service.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, I would just offer as well that, you know, so we've had budget sessions now, and although they've referenced different sections as we've set it up based on the schedule, you know, we've kind of made known to the superintendent what our views are and just reminding us that it's now in our hands. So, you know, we're kind of at that point where when we want to see changes to the budget, it's going to have to come from us, and we have to deliberate about that at this point. And so, this is the superintendent's proposed budget. He hasn't indicated any change at this point, so I'm going to just kind of remind us that it's on us.
Oh, Madam Chair, just one quick amendment. We've recommended a couple of changes, but the changes have been in the form of more monies in the school's accounts, so principals will have the ability to make decisions.
I agree, and I apologize, yes, and so, which I think is a good thing, that's going to also help them to make those decisions, but I just wanted to point that out so that we know where we, I mean, we are two days from where we're, yeah, I just want to make sure. So, Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. I'm going to ask some information that's been provided before, but I just want to make sure I get the correct language. What does, is it COMAR or the law or both say that our requirement is in regarding to high school certification with media specialists?
It, COMAR simply requires that a program of media services be provided in the school.
A full-time media services?
No, a program of. So it doesn't set any minimum or maximum in terms of FTEs.
In order for a high school to be certified, they have to have a program of media services in the school. How did we get that wrong last year? Last year, this issue came up, and when we checked, it did require a certified media specialist full-time.
It doesn't require a certified media specialist, Ms. Higgins. It requires some sort of program for media services. It doesn't talk about the who, it talks about the what. So it talks about the, a media program.
Okay. All right. And then, how many teachers do we have in our pool in reserve?
For recall for media specialist?
No.
Oh, overall.
The pool. So we have, we have 33 FTEs budgeted in the pool, and then we have $6.5 million also. Now, we haven't converted that $6.5 million into FTEs, but that $6.5 million is there for balancing or the pools, if you would...
And if that $6.5 million divided by 85,000 is how many FTEs? I'm sorry, my math isn't...
Yeah, we typically fall on the average of 15 FTEs per $1 million. And what number that gives us? 130? 90?
I know. So what was the math answer?
It's like, it's 76, but then if, so if those are all teachers, and then we already have the 33 budgeted, so we're looking at just about, you know, over 100.
Over 100. Okay. So that would, yeah, 109, right? Right, okay. And can you, I know you did this the last time, and I apologize for asking it again, but could you tell us, there's also $9 million put aside for helping adjust the system to student-based budgeting? Is that correct?
Six and a half million.
So that 6.5 million is the same 6.5 million?
Yeah, so it's for enrollment variations and for balancing. So, in the presentation I gave last week?
Right.
The reserve is right now at 11.5 million. We're proposing to use 2.5 of that for the small school subsidy, proposing to use 2.6 of it for the hold harmless, go for 8% to 4%, leaving us with 6.5 million for classroom balancing and enrollment variation.
Okay, and so that 6.5 million is the same 6.5 million you referenced in this pool? That's not a separate 6.5?
Right.
Just hoping?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And, but we do have another separate pool that I mentioned earlier of the 33 FTEs that also are there for balancing as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, Mr. Stansky, if we go from the 8% to 4% in terms of the gap, okay, so that gives more latitude as well for principals to make decisions. In other words, they have what they have now, but they can now shift decisions?
Yep. So the document that I sent the board, school by school, has an increase for each school, which includes the hold harmless, going from 8% to 4%, the small school subsidy, and the just straight increase to the base weight as well.
Right, so they can make decisions now that they may not have made two weeks ago?
Correct.
Based on that?
And it'd be, yeah, and it'd be in the late March timeframe that we would send these out.
Gotcha.
Let me follow up to your follow-up, to my follow-up.
Sure.
The small school, that 2.5, then, that's already been disseminated, or that's still being held?
It's pending, I mean, it's pending, right. So it's pending board vote, and we would also have it pending what the county executive proposes to the county council for his budget as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
But it's pending included in the information you've received.
Included in the information you received?
Yes.
Latest information, that's included.
The 2.5 for the small?
For the small and the 2.5 for the whole harmless. The information that you receive, the most recent information that you receive includes that, that 5 million.
Okay. And is there any remaining left, then, in the hold harmless? So the hold harmless was 2.5, and the small school was 2.5. Both of that is in the latest information?
Correct.
And then, remaining from that is the 6.5, which you're proposing to use for balancing, and if it was FTEs, it would turn out to be 76?
Correct.
Got it? Good, thanks. Sorry.
I will follow up to your follow-up. I wait until I have my own turn. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening. I actually do not have a question of my own on Human Resources, but I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Barrows, who unfortunately could not be here. He would like to first applaud the school system on saving $1.5 million on the phone bill, and he would like to know how many custodians will lose their job under this current budget, how many positions will be cut through attrition, and what steps are being put in place to ensure that the possibly impacted staff are notified as soon as possible about cuts?
So I can, I mean, so we're cutting 115 cleaner positions, and, you know, through attrition, I'll have Ms. Schilling talk about the attrition and retirement incentive and how that will all work out.
So we had about 24 applications for the retirement incentive from that unit, from SEIU. They weren't all cleaners, but probably about half of that was, so 12. So that brings the number Mr. Stansky gave you down by that much. Last year, I think, we realized about 70 through attrition, so I don't think we're going to get all the way there, but it's going to be close. And in terms of communication to employees, as soon as the board votes on Thursday, we plan to begin to roll out communications. Cleaners won't be first because we have to go through a pretty intense seniority listing process with both SEIU and 2250. So it's more likely that employees in Unit 1, 2, and 3 will probably receive the first of the rollout, but the cleaners won't be far behind.
I think that concludes Ms. Jackson's proxy.
Do you want to say thank you, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Armwood.
Thank you. I'd like to hear an example of how a high school principal has proposed providing required services with a .5 media specialist. Can you give me an examples of how they say they're going to provide the services?
So media is not a class, so I'm assuming what they'll do is they'll set up a schedule and allow that to, allow students to enter while that media specialist is there. Also, a lot of the labs used to be located in the media center, so the media specialist... a lot of the labs used to be located in the media center, so the media specialist needed to be there, but now that we've moved more to mobile labs, teachers are taking those labs out into the classrooms. So, the media center just will not be open for students to go in individually, but there are no media classes in the high school.
Okay, so there's been no real discussion of how they're providing services, for example, to seniors, juniors doing research, or the day-to-day activities students should be doing?
So, teachers can still take kids into the media center, and there's still a schedule for the media. They'll just have to schedule it.
Additionally, Ms. Armwood, given the, given many of the technologies that we use now, it doesn't, it doesn't require the research to occur only in the media center. I mean, so it no longer requires that. In fact, students can, and many do, with the mobile labs, with some of their media devices, with computers in the classroom, are doing that same type of research in other places. And so, that's why we are seeing a move away from just the computer labs in that center to individuals who are able to do that in multiple places.
Okay, I can see that, but many of the computers that students use are in the media centers, and while, and we do not encourage high school students normally to have out their, have their media devices out and using them during the day. That's very often against the rules specifically. To me, we're shortchanging students, and I'm thinking about specifically, you know, seniors. I'm trying to picture this working in some of our STEM programs. It just seems like it would be much easier to have that media specialist. And at the very least, if a principal decides in a high school to do without a media specialist, they should have a very specific plan in place so that you can make sure they're actually providing the required services.
Yes, sir, they would. I just wanted to let you know, we actually lack for computer, you're talking about access to computer resources, we actually lack for computer resources at the high school, and teachers have to figure out times that they can use the available resources. So, our computer labs are fully utilized by classroom teachers in the high school, and if we had more, they would be even more utilized.
Okay. And I'd like to ask another question, a different topic. How many of our schools are lacking nursing services now? Is that too far off?
Mr. Armwood, I would probably respond by saying that all of our schools have the presence of nursing services right now. Our nurses are covering numerous locations, and we have clustered those services that are provided.
Could you just describe what you just said?
I'll say it differently.
Yes.
All of our schools have nursing services coverage.
Are there nurses in all schools?
No.
Okay.
But all of the schools have nursing services coverage.
And when you say nursing services coverage, are you talking about CMT coverage versus nursing?
No, I'm talking about registered nurses, licensed nurses, as well as nurse managers are covering our various locations.
Okay. How many schools do not have nurses in the building?
That changes each day. That does. It changes each day depending on the medical acuity in each of our schools. So, nurses are moved each day depending on what needs exist among the students in each school.
Okay, there are some schools that regularly do not have a nurse in the school, and I'm trying to get an idea, how short are we on nurses and what's being done to address that issue?
Right now, we are looking at the complement of nurses that we have and the way our nurses are allocated. I don't think that it's been for quite some time that we've had a registered nurse in every single school because of attrition, because of absence, and because of a variety of other reasons. It's been a fairly long time since we've had a nurse in every school each day full-time. And so, what's happening right now is that we are looking at the model that we have and how we allocate our nursing services. We're looking at where the greatest need is based on the medical issues that students have within our particular schools, and we are working in a variety of ways. We've got a couple of groups working to analyze the best complement of allocation of our nurses.
I understand. One of our problems is we cannot, we're not paying enough to hire new RNs, is very often what I've been told, that we just don't pay enough to get new RNs. Have we looked at staffing LPNs which would enable us to service schools that have lower medical needs but still have a nurse in the building?
We absolutely have.
And where does that stand?
We are likely to conclude that process fairly soon. One of the issues that's raised with LPNs is that they have to be supervised by RNs, and so what we look at is where our complement is and where the medical needs are. And so, while we think that we might be able to get there with a combination of licensed and registered nurses, that's something that we're trying to figure out right now.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Height, let me see if I can, well, two things that Mr. Armwood brought up, and to the first, it sounds like we clearly need to see another look at media specialists. So, what I would like to have the administration do is to do the math on the locked one person at the high school level so that we can have a look and see what that looks like. But along with that, could you include the impact, if, for lack of a better way to characterize it? So, if we were to have the library, the media specialists locked at one in every high school, and in light of the fact that you've, you're proposing this additional funding for them to make additional, you know, more decisions, what effect would that have on the principal's ability to be able to make decisions about other positions? In other words, so if the board directed that that be the case, in light of the two point six or two point five million dollars, would that count against the principals for the, for their decision-making around, you know, what they need from a staff perspective? On the nursing issue, so just a little history, Mr. Armwood, about, I guess, three years, Ms. Johnson, I don't know, about three years ago, we took a whole look at the nursing capacity, if you will, in the schools. And so, she's correct, it hasn't been that there's a full-time person, but we increased the salary so that it was comparable to the district, to our region. And then, I guess, a better question, not a better question, but a question that might get to some of what you're saying is, how many vacancies do we have? So, not just, you know, how are we structuring it, but do we have vacancies right now?
We do.
So, and how many do we have? Do you know?
Karen?
We have thirty registered nurse vacancies, and we have, I believe, six LPNs.
So, what, so I think, Mr. Armwood, if you look at it that way, then what will happen is regardless of the fact that we don't have them, because that's not our structure to have them in every school, but if you have that many vacancies, that's going to have an impact on even when they're not at a school every day. So, then what follows from that is, what are we doing to fill those vacancies? How does that work?
Well, you know, I, this is not an excuse, it's a reason, but when you go out into the recruitment community and you're having to tell employees that we have cut three hundred million dollars in three years, we're not offering COLAs or STEPS, you can have a competitive salary three years ago, but that gets pretty outdated pretty quickly when you're dealing with the kind of fiscal challenges we are. That's why Chief Lynch and Cabinet has been exploring this cluster approach and the LPN approach so that it's probably not realistic to say we're going to fill thirty vacancies, but we can provide coverage in a way that utilizes our current staff while we continue to fill those vacancies, but we're being realistic about our challenges.
So, I think then, and thank you for that response, I think what follows from that, from the board's perspective, is certainly how are we making the best use of staff that we have, but we also know that with thirty vacancies, that's got to be a strain on staff if they're having to do the additional work. So, then it would become, okay, so what are we going to do? What's the contingency around, if we can't fill all the vacancies, how to make that happen? And when I say that, I mean, at what point are we coming up with a different approach beyond using the staff that we currently have?
The contingency becomes a contract, Madam Chair, so we have to look at the contract. And I know, in the current year's budget, FY twelve and FY thirteen, I think in both years, if I'm recalling correctly, I think we added a million dollars for the contract nurses to kind of ameliorate this issue, but it's even more broader than just the salaries. Everyone is struggling to find registered nurses. Whereas, as a school system, we're competing with the hospitals
Yes.
who are also looking for registered nurses and who can also offer differentials if they work at a certain time. So, we're really at a disadvantage as we think about this requirement of a registered nurse in every school, and that's why Karen and her, and her team are really looking at this issue to figure out, how can we deliver the service without locking ourselves into a competitive situation that where we are at a disadvantage, essentially. The other point, and to Mr., I want to go back to Mr. Armwood's earlier point. One thing, I absolutely agree, Mr. Armwood, that schools have to have a plan for how they will deliver the service, and we'll be glad to get that information. I'm at a disadvantage this evening because Ms. Golson, who manages our high school, she's attended another meeting, for me, actually, and so she's not here, but we will be able to talk about how those services are delivered with only a .5 at the high school. I think that's, and I think that's important. And just as they, just as they look at other areas, I'm actually more concerned when it comes to media specialists with the elementary schools. And here's why I'm concerned about that, is because the media, the media center then does become a class, and it becomes a class that teachers can use when they're either collaborative planning, or they're using data, or they're meeting with a parent. So, I'm more concerned with that level than, quite frankly, I am with the high schools because there are a few more people there who can, who can also help provide that media service. But in answer to your question, Madam Chair, with how much, it would be about a million dollars to take high schools to a full, a one point oh media specialist at each one. And it would depend on how we were able to find the one million to determine if it impacts. If it's over what we have already, it probably will not have an impact, but if we're going to say you must use the one point, I mean, you must adjust that .5 up to a one point oh, then they will have to make some different decisions based on schedules and budgets that they've already submitted.
So, potentially, a principal could say, okay, if I have to take, if I had to do this, I'm going to cut somewhere else. Is that what you're saying?
Without the additional one million dollars.
That's where we go. Okay. Ms. Beck?
Is it appropriate now to reconsider the two time, I mean, the two speaking limitations? Because I'm taking my second now, and then I'll have a third. We're limited to speaking twice, so we need to reconsider whether we're going to speak a third time.
Oh, yeah, we can do, we can, we can do a, and I'll do it by consensus. We can do a third round if we need to. Not a problem. This is what we do.
While we're still on the media specialist, several years ago, we made a commitment to the media specialist for a line item in the budget for them to purchase subscriptions or whatever. So, we put the line item in the budget, and then we didn't put any money on it. So, we went halfway, but we didn't populate it. So, what I would like is, since we're going by student now, is to consider doing a one dollar or a two dollar per student media specialist allocation. So, a one dollar per student would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and if you're in a building with five hundred kids, you'd get five hundred dollars. And then you're not dependent on the largesse of a principal to carve this funding out of their already now limited SOAR funding and dedicate it in that line item that we committed to the media specialist years ago. I would like to see the two dollar because we cannot continue to, to ignore the status of our media centers without additional funding. And I know that in, I believe it was John Dacey's years, we had a dedicated stream from the county council to refresh our libraries. I know some principals, I think it was like five million or something, yeah. But now we're getting into, we're going to a half-time media specialist, and we're giving them no money for subscriptions or, I'm not a librarian, so, I mean, I'm going to, but I think we have heard from our media specialists that they do need a dedicated line for them to tap into for purchases. And I would propose, I would like to see it come out of the six points five that Matt just threw on the table. And I would say that a hundred and twenty-five thousand is the dollar per kid, and I think that that's keeping in line with our student-based budgeting, but, but instead, tag it specifically to that line item category. So, that's what I'm throwing on the table. So, I think I'm looking for a, at some point, a response if that's something you're completely opposed to, or, but I think that the six point five million dollar fund would be a good location to look at that level of money. While we're still...
We'll take a look at that. I mean, it's intriguing. And who's the media specialist supervisor? Is it Sherry?
Sherry Bloom.
Sherry.
Bloom, yeah.
Yeah, so I want to talk to her.
Am I done already? Okay. I wanted to get into the athletic, question number sixty-seven, interscholastic athletics. I asked for emolument and by sport and by school and per diem as well. I didn't receive the per diem, and I only received the winter allocation. So, I know that football is the sport that's done by per diem, and that wasn't part of the response. And the, the emolument was only for winter payroll. So, I'd like a follow-up on that.
Get you a full list.
I know that the football per diem is part of the contract, but when we look at that, that's a lot of money on football. And I don't think there's any other sport that is per diem-based. All other sports are emolument-based. Question, page twenty-three, question twenty-eight. The Academy of Health Sciences Middle College, estimated cost per student is almost twelve thousand dollars per student. So, I went to the chart that was the follow-up chart to the last one that we got. First of all, twelve thousand dollars, that's a lot per student. That is winning the lottery when you win a seat in that middle college program because you don't have to pay for junior college tuitions, and your child comes out with the AA. But winning that seat in the middle college application process really is the equivalent of about forty-eight thousand dollars that we're going to be... that we're going to be, um, supporting your child with. And I go to some of the other programs and we're clearly not supporting kids to that level in a lot of other initiatives. Which is why, um, I'm really focused on middle college. Last year, we approved a meal charge for middle college that was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It was, uh, it was nineteen hundred dollars per student. I don't see that now. Um, so that, so we didn't do that? We cut that. Where did that money go? Okay. Didn't go to library services? No. Um, that's something that I kind of harbored all year because I just felt like a nineteen hundred dollar meal ticket for that program to me was excessive. Having had kids go through junior college and never had the meal ticket, I know you can succeed without it. But now that it's gone, um, we are providing our own food services for these kids. So there is a cost.
Now, we worked with, um, it, it's a cost, but it's not ni... Yeah, it is, um, we consider that cost with all of the other costs that we consider inside of food service. So those, it would be like if those students were at their regular schools, the cost associated with a lunch, uh, as it relates to those students.
And they pay for this? Or the kids pay for this?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, except for your free or reading.
Unless they're farm.
Okay, okay.
And half-ark.
And...
Halfer farms.
Halfer farms, thank goodness. Page, um, uh, question fifty-one. The alternative school costs. Um, I broke down Green Valley against Tall Oaks. And per student, if you break it down, it's twenty-four thousand. But Tall Oaks is thirty thousand. There seems to be a significant difference in terms of the, the three point three million that we're funding Tall Oaks and the two point seven that we're funding for Green Valley for the same number of students. So, um, what, where's the discrepancy? Is this actual salary or it... Same number of kids?
So let me, let me get you the breakdown of, it could be discretionary, it could be a number of things. I just have to...
Because if you break it out by FTEs...
Right, there's more FTEs at Poe, so...
Right, and the FTEs are the big difference there.
Right, so it could be like a contracted service that is provided at Tall Oaks, but I don't wanna, let me, let me get the actual breakdown for you.
So are the alternative school students, are, other than special ed, they're our most expensive student or program? The alternative school?
Yeah, yeah, other than special ed, yeah, without question. Yeah, per student, yep.
Okay.
Question fifty...
Oh, page, page, question fifty-one, page thirty-two. And then, um... Okay, yes. Um, I'm done.
Ms. Higgins? Thank you. Um, Ms. Beck, I know that you and I kind of see things a little differently with middle college and I just wanted to bring the positives to what Ms. Middle College, um, offers. And while that certainly is an expensive program that I believe becomes less expensive as more students participate in that. So in the third year and in the fourth year, that twelve thousand will come down. It is a high number. The benefits that we as a system though get, in addition to the individual benefits for those, uh, children, um, a number of them are first generation and then farm students as well, is that, uh, we're the only system in the state, I believe. Isn't that correct, Dr. Height? Who has a middle college in the, in a, um, community college setting?
That is correct.
Yeah. Uh, you know, when we tell people that it's our system and we're doing middle college, we, we get a lot of that bang for buck. But, but I know we've had many of these discussions, so. Um, I wanted to also discuss, last meeting, we talked about pre-K. And we talked about the number of pre-K students, uh, the success rate in terms of that the success, um, the scores that were the pre-K students now that they were now half-time had decreased. And so that raises the issue for me in terms of those pre-kindergartners will now be heading for kindergarten and then first grade. And, um, with the cuts that we did last year and, uh, the new initiative in terms of reading, um, specialists and, and paying attention to increasing the capacity of teachers for professional development. And I just wondered, Dr. Arbogast, if you could talk about, um, what we're doing in regards to professional development for our, um, teachers as well as, uh, with a specific emphasis in terms of early reading?
So there were about pre-K and early reading?
Early reading, but generally overall to the tag, the STEM, all of those.
So with, um, let's start with pre-K. So the, at the beginning, moving from a ha- full day to a half-day, there was pretty significant professional development offered to teachers. The teachers themselves admit it's been a struggle going from full day to pre-K. They, the mindset was very much a full-day curriculum, trying to squash it into a two and a half hour day, when in fact it probably needed to be more prioritized and some things had to go. So that transition's been tough. What we did in elementary was, for early reading, was, we were, our, you would describe our reading program as guided reading. And we used to have these guided reading workshops about three or four years ago and we cut them. We've reinstituted the guided reading workshop, so that's a professional development. Also, as you know, we deployed the twenty-four former reading recovery teachers to serve as a strike team and they're servicing twenty-four schools, the lowest reading performance. And that, and the data that we're getting on that is, has been pretty positive. So that's early reading. The, uh, we're doing pretty significant professional development around Race to the Top and Advanced Placement and International Baccalaureate. And we also have, that's our Race to the Top money. There's also state Race to the Top money that we're working with special educators, ELL teachers and STEM teachers in both elementary schools that are feeders to the turnaround and the turnaround schools. So there's state money going to that. And we're running, the way we're running that professional development are around problems of practice. So there are groups of teachers who are meeting with a facilitator and they're working through STEM, uh, ELL issues and special ed issues. We have several grants that are engaged around professional development. The National Science Foundation, uh, MSP grant, that's a collaboration between Bowie's and the University of Maryland, Prince George's Community College. And our system has pretty intense professional development. We're doing professional development for teachers of earth science around, uh, with a collaboration with NCTAF, that's also in Race to the Top. And then that Title II is the large federal grant that moves towards professional development. And this morning, both, um, Mr. Sandsky and I asked for a printout so that you could see the categories. But I don't have it as of the, this meeting time, so you can actually see where the Title II dollars are going. And the Title II dollars are spread across some of our common core training and content-specific training in language arts, reading, math. And then the final thing I want to mention is we do have some money in Title II for IFL. And they're working around project modules in a math in elementary school and reading, language arts in high school. So it's a broad range, but it comes from different pots.
So you, would it be possible by tomorrow, maybe afternoon, to have that information and to provide it to the full board? Yeah, okay, thank you. I'll wait for round three.
Ms. Johnson?
Thanks. Uh, one of, a couple of id- uh, areas. Wanna do one last, uh, commentary with regard to our libraries. I would like, uh, to have at, during the spring, following spring break, a review of virtual libraries and its subscription cost and how it can augment our libraries. It would do, I believe, one, the hard paper books. In addition, there are multiple virtual libraries that are truly phenomenal in terms of, one, the system, if it became a subscriber, then that subscription would be parceled out to each school having its own subscription and could be blocked with regard to the age level of students. The library is continually updated with the latest of information. Students would be able to take notes online which would be saved on the virtual library server and at the conclusion of their high school year, graduate, they can, for a one-time fee, buy the subscription, maintain it through their college career. And their notes and things would still be available. That is one that I happen to know and have utilized. But I believe that part of the discussion is what's driving this is the concern that those of us sitting here have about availability of material. Um, magazines, newspapers, books, et cetera, for students to have an array of choices, which we cannot and no school system can do in the hard-bound fashion. So I believe that since we are technologically savvy in PGCPAS and I am very proud of what we have done to Mr. Watson, his team, I think it is tremendous. I think a virtual library is clearly the next step. Not this year, but I think we have to do planning toward that. And I believe that there are some of my colleagues on the board who do see this as something we need to look at. So, um, next point. Looking at the numbers of custodial services positions, you have one fifteen, I believe, was the total. Is that number made up of those who are going to retire, resign? Because when you look at that total two-page list, we come up with twelve-something FTEs different from the previous year. Those numbers, I will say to you, I'm not understanding them. Um, particularly in the service for, when you look at that number of people coming out of SEIU. I, I don't know. We have a lot of floor space in this county. And because of the need for cleanliness, et cetera, I want to know how that work is gonna get done.
So I'll, I'll answer the first part about the report and then I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Miles about how the work will get done. But, um, so the report that was sent to the board, right, is so as of right now, the proposed budget reduces overall the number of positions by twelve over the previous year. So obviously you see some increases in some positions and some decreases in positions. Now how though, how, um, how, those posi... Now, I, I'm speaking of positions, whether we can, whether folks, this is why we offer the retirement incentive again this year too. So then if folks retire, we just are able to reduce that position without having to riff anybody. Also, we can get it through attrition potentially. But, you know, it's still, it's, since it's so early, it's February, it's hard, it's hard to say whether, how we'll get all of those positions through attrition or, or retirement. But we looked at it from, when you look at it from a position standpoint, it's strictly from an operation standpoint. And so those, and, and how schools are making decisions with the dollars they, they got as well. So, um, with that, I'll, obviously one of the bigger areas was...
So that one fifteen is a hard number.
That hundred and fifteen?
Is a hard number.
Correct, yeah. And, and, and so I'll, I'll let Mr. Miles, uh, discuss how we'll get those, you know, continue to get the buildings clean with it.
And Justice is answering, Madam Chair, let me just finish out. Um, I've looked at the budgets that, uh, surrounding jurisdictions have laid on the table for their county councils. It is incredible, incredible. Our neighbors, their first number is a two. We are at one-six. It is better than before. We are very happy about that, but I have to tell you, our children are in competition with those students. And we are talking about media specialists, we're talking about, uh, custodial staff, we're talking about high-end learning. And we are in a one point six four budget when two miles, five miles, fifteen miles away, they are talking two billion plus. Citizens of Prince George's County have got to step up. It is incredible what we are asked to do and to meet the challenge. And we are one million plus less. And our children are just as deserving and just as important. So our citizens need to understand, these are the dynamics of, in which we're living. So, thank you, Mr. Miles.
Yeah, hi. Um, I guess about a month ago, almost a month ago, we provided the board with the listing of all of the, um, activities we hope would relieve some of the, the cleaning issues with regard to the reduction. One of the areas we talked about was team cleaning. We talked also about sectioning off particular areas and identifying, um, those areas where we would clean maybe every other day um, as it relates to trash and somewhat. Uh, but for the most part, we're basically identifying the areas and we're increasing, we're more or less in line with the number of square footage that we would clean because we, as you recall, we were way below that number. So we're closer to that number now and, and we think we have a plan that will basically, um, cover, provide the coverage. We've tried it out in some areas already. We're still not there yet with regard to the actual, um, school that, schools that are gonna be affected yet. But we think we'll be there in, in due time. Then we'll, failure's not an option here. Failure's not an option.
But it wasn't to that question, it was actually to the earlier question. But it was, it was several of the questions combined. And I just want to offer, um, some comments on that. And, and Ms. Higgins, this goes to your question about professional development. But Ms. Johnson actually reinforced in her question, your, your question really about professional development and, and talking about this notion of virtual libraries and, and so that problem in the past has not been enough money for professional development. It's been the type of development that we were providing for as staff members. And for some, it was a one-size-fits-all as opposed to something that was more responsive to what they needed in order to grow. And so part of this new design is really to provide professional development that is just-in-time and responsive to the needs of individuals who require that professional development. So hence, we use the reading, early reading model. So providing more teachers with the ability to recognize reading difficulties with students. That's targeted professional development for individuals who need that development. But as we think about this notion, and here's where Ms. Johnson's question, in my opinion, intersected with yours. It is, and, and as we think about media specialists and just teachers in general, and think about professional development because all of this intersects. You know, we are in a situation now and we're starting to look at this with our schools that have, um, more available technology. Now, not all schools do, but we have some of our middle schools that have, uh, a one-to-one type of use, um, in the schools. We have elementary schools who are using, um, more technology than they've ever used. And what we're finding is this. So unlike in the past where content and information was generally in some place, so it was either with the teacher, with the media specialist or in the library. But now, what we're finding when students are using these technologies, information is democratized, it's exploding and it's free. And so it's available to multiple students in multiple ways. And so, so part of the PD then, professional development then becomes, how do we equip teachers to become facilitators of that information and that co- in that content in a contextual way so that it is adding value to the learning process for students? And so that's kind of where we are evolving to as we think about this. So that's why something like a virtual library becomes more in line with where we should be looking at going and then providing the just-in-time professional development to equip everybody. equip everybody to use that resource, so that it's not associated with a place, or an FTE for that matter, but it is something that all teachers, all staff members, all media specialists are equipped to do. And it was just, it wasn't a specific question, but you asked the earlier question about PD, Ms. Johnson asked a question about the, just kind of the, how we deliver the services. And I just think, as we, as we start to move towards refreshing more, more technologies, we have to look at models that are going to look very different than what we currently have in place. And I think about that as it relates to media services, I think about that as it relates to content, textbooks, devices. And so I just wanted to put that out there, because that's kind of where we're moving, and it's moving away from this notion that it exists somewhere. So all students have to go to that place in order to receive it.
One of the questions I had, Mr. Stansky, is on Slide 42, when we talk about the vendors for the machines we buy at schools. This money, is this part of money, does it go back to the schools, or is it part of the, does it go into a general fund?
Vending machine goes to the Student Activity Fund.
I'm sorry?
It goes to the Student Activity Funds at the schools.
Okay. Now, I noticed you only listed middle schools and high schools, and I do know that it's just about every elementary school have vending machines, if it's not, it's in the teachers' lounges. I think they, I haven't been to a middle, elementary school that does not have a vending machine. So why was that not listed in here, and the amount of money that we get from those vending machines was listed?
Keith, refer to Mr. Miles on that list.
I think I missed part of the question.
I wanted to know, why did you only list middle schools and high schools that have vending machines that we're getting revenue? Because I haven't been to an elementary school that did not have a vending machine. But I noticed that no middle, elementary schools was listed in this list of vending machines for schools. Forty-two and forty-three.
I'm not sure why. What I'll do is I'll research this and get back to you.
Thank you. Also, Ms. Beck, I too agree with Ms. Higgins that the Middle College, I think, is a, definitely one of the right spots of Prince George's County. I had an opportunity to visit there half a day, I spent the whole half a day there, and the rigor by which these children are learning in that school is almost remarkable. I think it, if I'm not mistaken, I think we had over 1,000 applicants that applied for 100 positions this year, if I'm not mistaken. 4,000. So it shows that Middle College is, is one of our, I think, schools that, or programs that are attracting people back to our county, and that's what we need, especially at a time when we're actually losing student enrollment, it's getting lower. I think this is a good way to actually try to inspire more people to come back to our college. So I really applaud the superintendent for having the foresight to bring Middle College. Another thing, I think as the years go by, like Ms. Higgins said, that price is going to go down, especially with transportation, because when I went there, I noticed, and I talked to the principal, and a lot of kids really not as utilizing our transportation as much as we thought they would. So I really see that the cost will come down as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. I think I heard that for your questions, they're going to get back to you. Is there something else? I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you. Ms. Waller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Height and staff, certainly I support Middle College wholeheartedly. However, I, I guess there's not a way that, to ensure that we, we don't track the students that go there, but certainly, in light of the economic times we're living in, I would like to be able to be assured that those students that are first-generation, Title I, and ELL students are certainly included in the majority of the students that are going there. I understand, you know, how it's open, but I feel that with the economic situation being what it is, we need to ensure, if these students are not taking transportation and they're, they're Title I families, or whatever, I'm not quite sure how they're getting there. I mean, because most of those students, those are the students that are not going to have cars, and they're not going to have parents that are going to be able to get them there. So I think that there's some, I think that we need to look at some type of way of tracking the students that are going to the Middle College, and to ensure that it's, again, equitably distributed across the county, from first-generation families and Title I populations. Insofar as the, my colleague was speaking about the dollar per student for the Library Media Center, I think it's a good idea to give them some, some financial assistance specifically for that. My concern is that if you have a school that has 300 students, they would only get $300, but if you get a high school, or even another school, a middle school, or even elementary school, that has 800 students, they would get $800, and the amounts are not proportionate. And I know you all said that you're going to have someone look into these amounts, but that would be my concern. I think that there needs to be an equitable way of, you know, getting the money into that fund. The, for human resources, I know we're still going on recruitment efforts, and I would like to know what, what amounts, is, are we having an increase for the amounts of monies allocated for recruitment efforts? And in what specific areas are we doing recruitment efforts in? Now, we, I know we'd be losing, you know, some people, but what, where are we going and how are we looking at that? My second, third question, or whatever, is about the support staffs at the school. Some of our schools are used 24/7, and other schools are not. And certainly, I would like to be assured that when we have special activities that involve large numbers of students and community, that we're able to possibly move persons around to ensure that those schools are covered for that period of time. Thank you.
I can answer the recruitment question, and then Mr. Miles or Dr. Coleman Potter can talk about the school coverage for school support. My, my office of supporting personnel works closely with supporting services to move people as needed where, where there needs to be coverage, but other than that, I'll leave it to them. In terms of recruitment, there's no dollars added for recruitment per se, but there are a couple of items that we're, we're going, that you'll see in the budget, that we're going to use, I would say, less about recruitment and more about capitalizing on our current staff. So an example is, we're going to, in partnership with the Maryland Higher Education Commission, we have a grant opportunity for the coming year where content area teachers can become duly certified in special education, so they can be teaching full-time special education, full-time in the content area, do pull-out, have a lot more flexibility and versatility to, for that kind of coverage. Of course, we have to talk about things like the special ed differential, because currently we're not paying that, and, you know, again, like nurses, it's a very competitive market out there for special education teachers, so to the extent that we could bring back something like the differential, I think that would pay huge dividends. We also have a number of paraprofessionals who are interested in becoming certified teachers, and so we're trying to find grant opportunities and university partnerships where we can capitalize on that desire, and in exchange for helping them through grants or tuition reimbursement, they would pledge to keep teaching here for a number of years. But no dollars for recruitment per se. I also, you know, Bob Gaskin will be here on March 8th when we do HR oversight, and he will talk to you about his targeted recruitment plan that he does every fall, based on the trend data for the last three years. Then he matches that against the areas where we're going to see reductions or additions, and he and his staff plan, the recruitment plan specifically around that. This year, we have a major focus on bilingual, and trying to tap into our communities where we know we have some connections for bilingual candidates across all areas. And we collected baseline data from principals last year about where they are seeing the need, what kinds of positions in their schools, and at which schools do we have bilingual needs so that we can target our recruitment that way. I hope that was helpful, Ms. Waller.
Mr. Miles, I believe they said you were going to respond to the support question when we have-
Yeah, before he responds, Ms. Waller, I just want to go back to Middle College. I think that, so that there's no confusion, half of the students are from families that qualify for free and reduced lunch. So half the students who are attending right now, half of the students that we will take next year will be from families who qualify for free and reduced lunch. Those young people, and I sent this information to the board earlier, no one's on academic probation, there's an average GPA of 3.72, I believe, and every student who started the program is finishing the program. And students who are farms, we provide lunches, just like we would do in our schools, and we also provide transportation for them to, to get there. And I can answer the facility use, Mr. Miles, if you don't mind. Yeah, so the, we do have buildings that are used more than some of the others, and most of the fees associated with that are captured inside of facility use. This year, we did begin, we began utilizing the, or holding people to the policy around facility use that also required them to pay the $2 material fee per hour, because they, because if large numbers of individuals are using the facility all the time, then it does start to replenish some of the resources there, paper towels, or things that are just used in and around the schools. So we have been able to offset that cost associated with the facilities. And those individuals, if they cannot work in those buildings, the, the staff would then contact other staff members who are either assigned to that building or in that general geographic vicinity, and they would cover.
We'll come back to you for round two. Did you have a bundle of additional questions?
No, Madam Chair, I don't have a bundle.
Do you have one or two?
I have one question.
Then I'm going to defer to you, ma'am, so that you can do your second round.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for deferring to me. In regards to constituent services, I see that the number, the staffing remains at a total of four. Is this number of staffing, is this a realistic number? I'm not suggesting that we need to increase it, I'm not saying we need to decrease it, but is this a realistic number for the constituent services requests and processes that our school system is undergoing, and the timely manner in which we need issues looked into and referred? And what changes? Well, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Ms. Waller, thank you for that question. While we can always use additional staff, the, we have to operate inside of a financial picture that we are faced with. And instead of adding more positions to constituent services or anywhere else for that matter, we chose instead to put more money into the school-based accounts. And so all of the extra revenue is really, we're trying to push into schools. And, but we do think that as the constituent service office begins and completes their training around service responsiveness and things with schools, then we would be better able to manage the, the types of things that they're getting into those offices as well. So the four are sufficient. Can there be more to answer your question? Yes, we could always use more individuals, but we made a conscious choice to really try to focus any additional resources towards schools.
So does this mean that the individual schools are in training to take care of more constituent requests?
No, we, we think that constituent requests should be handled at the closest to the incident or the issue as possible, which means that if a constituent has a concern with a teacher, then it should be first-handled at that level. If they have a concern with the school, it should be first-handled at that level. And as we get better at that, then it eliminates the need for constituent services to handle everything that comes toward the district level. So it really is a responsiveness, and making people more aware of the need to be responsive, and then also with a view towards providing better service to our constituents in general. That's not the sole job of constituent service. We would not have enough people in that department to handle all of the requests, but instead to distribute that approach across our system, so that everyone who comes in contact with constituents also know that, know the process, and know how to respond, and know how to provide good service.
You're very welcome, Ms. Waller. Ms. Jackson?
I recently, like about last week, was able to visit Middle College, and I will have to say that I was thoroughly impressed and a little jealous that these underclassmen can say they're college students before me. But I am concerned about the fact that we're kind of delegating a lot of funding to 100 students when we're a large system, and it's kind of seems like it's at the expense of a lot of other students. And regardless of socioeconomic status, it's kind of like there's a certain type of student and household to take the initiative to apply to something like that. And so it seems like those students that wouldn't think about it are kind of being the ones that have to deal with the problems of losing some of that funding. So with that being said, one of the things that I found quite alarming was the fact that there were 12 buses for the 100 students in the morning. And so you said that this year is going to be the first year where we start staggered bell time, right?
That's correct. No, not, not as it relates to Middle College, we're actually piloting a different method for transporting the students to Middle College.
Okay. And so how will the savings with that method compare to the new cost of transporting in 100 additional students?
That's why we're doing the pilot, so we can determine that.
So, okay, so with, based on that, essentially, we kind of don't know how much more Middle College is going to cost us this year, because of the fact that you're doing the pilot.
Yeah, no, what we do know, what we do know is that the 12 buses for 100 students is inefficient, and that one of the reasons we targeted Middle College to be a pallet for the new transportation system, because we feel like it's a more efficient way to transport those students. There are also a couple of other programs throughout our system that transport kids every day, where it's also just as inefficient. So we have to look at it across all of the programs and departments, not just at one, but we're picking that one, because there is a defined group of students who are coming from multiple places, and if we can make that work there, we can make, we can apply it across our school system.
So what, what will be the system that's most likely piloted?
It's a hub system. Those students will be going to their school, taking one bus to their home schools first, and then you'd have a bus circulating to pick them up from their various schools.
So what are the chances that the students that are going to Middle College will be in areas where the buses are already crowded? And, I mean, what would happen in the instance where you want to send them to a hub where they're- where their home schools, but their buses already really can't handle them or have, I mean?
Yeah, Ms. Jackson, just in terms of, when we look at the capacity of our buses now as well as um usage of those buses, we're not having an issue with overcapacity. Uh, where we have issues with overcapacity is where students have designated that they are not gonna pick the bus up at the designated stop. Um, and so, they are actually moving to other stops where they shouldn't be. But when we talk about middle college for next year, we're actually saying that students will ride their comprehensive bus to their comprehensive high school. And then we'll have one hub bus that will actually pick them up and take them to school. That works on arrival, but it does not work right now for dismissal. And we've actually modeling this after an, another neighboring county who was using the same type of transportation system for their specialty programs. So, in the evening, um, students will have to ride designated buses back to their neighborhoods. I do wanna say, though, you're very perceptive in terms of saying that there are twelve buses. What we actually know based on information we just got within the last two weeks is that we have some of those one hundred students that are not using our transportation system at all. So, the ridership piece is also important, being able to correctly identify and decommission stops if students are not using those buses is another important cost savings piece that we plan on implementing immediately.
So, do you have a guesstimate about how many students are not using the buses?
Um, I think our last number was that there were about eighteen to twenty who are not using our transportation system. So, certainly, you can see out of a hundred students, that's a savings in and of itself. And we plan on continuing to make sure that we correctly identify every single student who rides the bus so that we can have an accurate picture going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Beck?
We have dedicated two point five million dollars for the small school subsidy. And there are fifty-three small schools by our definition. Thirty-four of these are elementary. That just screams out for um addressing. And I, I don't mean to say we need to close schools, but we need to be able to say thirty-four schools to us are now costing us an additional two point five million because of under enrollment. Um, at what point, I know we just went through this. It just seems like we went through this with um our consolidated school initiative. But um, we continue to have schools that are costing us more than they should because of enrollment declines. Are, are you proposing to um revisit the consolidated school discussion? Or next year, will we be spending another two point five million um on maintaining the small schools when that could really be spent elsewhere?
I, I think that's a, that's a question that we have to talk about collectively as a part of policy. And some of the schools, you're right, Ms. Hathaway Beck, some of the schools are because of enrollment declines. Others are because they're small schools.
Right.
So, that they're at capacity, they're just small. And we have to think about collectively, so what is our, our policy approach to, to, to that dynamic? And because what we know is that schools under a certain number just cost more. And if that's the case, then do we continue operating those schools or do we do something else with that? And I think that becomes a part of a broader policy conversation around the optimal size of, of schools. And then that would determine then what we do next. Because if some of these, they're at capacity, they're just small. Um, others are a result of um the loss of about seven thousand students since I've been here. And that, and that's what we were trying to address with the boundary changes. But um, it speaks, in my opinion, to a broader policy piece around small schools.
I think, well, we did get the information on the enrollment and the SRCs and the seat shortages in the um temporary spreadsheet. Um, so where we seem like we have four hundred and sixty-five temporaries, really, we don't need the vast majority of them. Um, but I can understand that moving them or getting rid of them is, is also an expense. But um, at, at one point, we had a map that showed us um the under and the over enrollment. And it was the red, green, yellow map, so that red would be stop, we're full. Green would be um plenty of capacity and yellow would probably be. And um, I think that might be helpful for us to see where, where um, where we have an abundance of seats. And that might lead the discussion into um why we're spending two point five million dollars outside of a classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to ask um some questions about the six point five million dollars that's in reserve. Uh, when will we know um whether we're going to need that money? Or when we're not gonna need that money?
I can tell you now we need it.
Got it, got it. But when will it be used by or when?
Well, I mean, the first step is to see what the county executive is, is going to propose in his budget to the county council, depending on what we send over. Um, and then we monitor um enrollments throughout the summer. And then we really begin the balancing process in, in August.
Okay.
And um, and, you know, we historically have added uh anywhere from fifty to a hundred FTEs, depending on the year, um, given, given the enrollment variations that, that may occur and the, and the class size issue.
So, we would know that then by end of September, beginning of October?
Yeah, yeah, we, we'd like to make the decision shortly after Labor Day at the latest.
Okay, all right. Um, because I, I, you know, Dr. Height, I, I have a tremendous respect for you and your vision and your um accomplishments um with you and your staff um have achieved with our school system. And I heard you uh when you talked about professional development and how we need to do it. But your language is, this is where we're going and this is where we're headed. Um, and I think that, given that, seeing how large our high schools are, um, there would be a benefit to having um a full-time media specialist in those high schools, uh, just given the, the volume of, of, of youth. But I, I wanna be sensitive to our need to not commit our money um until we really know the full picture. So, um, one of the things I'm thinking of is, is that if we made that allocation of a million dollars for the um, for the media specialists, that would be over and above what the schools, so the schools wouldn't have to take it out of their own. That would leave us five point five um million and that we would um, and I don't even know what kind of language to use, to maybe then um say that if in that five point five million, there was at least by September thirtieth, um, three hundred and twenty thousand, that two hundred and fifty thousand could go to the library refresh and um a hundred and seventy thousand to add towards the professional development. So, that, that's what I'm thinking, that it could be only if that money was available um after we had met some of our other priorities. So, it's a thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Stansky, as I've been um going through the budget, looking at the division of academics, um, I, I have not been able to effectively track where we are with high school reform. As you know, we have put into the public domain a cluster system. I realize that is based on, we've gotta look at drawing the boundaries. I know we have declining enrollment. And clearly, some of the programs cost a little more than do others. But I am having difficulty in the budget seeing that we are still on track to fulfill that conversation and commitment to building a high school system of programming where students can make choices about their future. And so, if you could help me do that.
Absolutely. So, um, second story, secondary school reform initiative is being implemented over a five-to-six-year timeframe. Um, this year, for fiscal year thirteen, on page twenty-three, um, you'll see we're proposing to add fourteen point five positions and roughly two point four million dollars into the budget for expansion of those programs. Um, if you give me a moment.
I got that.
Okay.
It doesn't say the what.
Okay.
You see, I, I, I don't believe, I think our commitment is somewhat there, but we need some specificity.
Right.
So, that we know, I know, based on the schematic that you gave about the different programs that we're looking to have in the cluster system, because attendant to that are some boundary issues as well as some transportation discussion, none of which have been concluded. And so, just identifying, okay, there is this little commitment, but it doesn't hang on to the other stuff. And so, I can't track the money to see what it's going to produce at the end of the two thirteen, two fourteen school year.
And we answered this question fairly, fairly specifically in the, in the questions document that I submitted to you. But it's a fairly lengthy document, so you give me a moment to search and find the response and then I can.
I'm not suggesting that you didn't. I'm just saying, I've been trying to track it and I can't.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson, can we get that information? We'll send it to the whole board. Yeah, we'll, we'll send it to the whole board.
Thanks. I, I'm not suggesting, it's just that I know we have to do things in increments. And I know it's going across multiple years, but um, we're not talking about it as much. And so, it's kind of dying in terms of generating interest. And we can't let that happen. This budget needs to be out there and tracking and continuing, generating interest. And I read all of them. Evidently, I missed it 'cause it was huge, um, but it is of a concern because I'd like to know what's gonna happen in District One, in the cluster in which the, you know, and everybody else would too. So, we need to know.
Yeah, and what would be, what I think would also be helpful, Ms. Johnson, we should probably come back and do an update on where we are with regard to secondary school reform.
And tie it to this budget.
Absolutely.
And where it is, um, because the money, how it's threaded through the budget for different things, um, that one I could not find. Thank you.
And so, to, to that end also, Dr. Height, 'cause I had a constituent ask me today about um the clusters. And my response was actually, we're just kind of starting to get some legs back on the budget somewhat and that I didn't anticipate that we would see anything until the following school year. So, if there's, I, I, which is separate from what I was, what I thought I read. So, um, I guess, Ms. Johnson, how that would be tied into this budget would be an interesting question if at this point, Dr. Height, you think you have something to add, not today, now, but I'm saying.
Yeah, and we'll provide that information just prior to the next meeting. But it, it does tie specifically into this budget at certain locations to Ms. Johnson's point.
And that's kind of what I was saying too. We're just limited as to what programs we could start. Now, we can't roll the whole thing out. All right, um, Dr. Height, that actually concludes the list of questions for this evening um from colleagues. I would say um, as a reminder, colleagues, uh, today is the twenty-first. Tomorrow's the twenty-second, which means Thursday's the twenty-third. Um, so, if there are any questions that come to mind between now and then, um, I'd like to have a, a, a centralized way for us to gather those so we don't lose sight of them. So, I would suggest that if you have some questions between now and Thursday, if you can get them in onto the board office, um, copy myself and Ms. Higgins so that we can help to facilitate how to get those done. And then knowing that um, Mr. Stansky, you're gonna have to be uh, you know, ready to respond immediately 'cause obviously, we have to vote on Thursday. Um, but staff, uh, colleagues, where it would have some impact in terms of crunching numbers, I would say, you know, make sure we do, we do our due diligence in getting that information out. Um, having said that, that um concludes our budget work session for this evening. And uh, I'm going to adjourn. And then we have about three minutes before our public hearing starts. Motion to, and we are on time. Uh, thank you. Some probably moved in second that we adjourned this meeting and we are so adjourned. Thank you for your.